It's 5:02 and we're going to call this meeting to order. We'll be opening with a moment of silence and the pledge led by Ms. Bab.
Face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving along, I don't believe there's any elected officials. If you are, please raise your hand. Thank you. Just a reminder also to all of our families with students that are new to Knox County Schools, the summer transfer window ends on Monday, July 1st. So be sure to submit all transfer applications by that date. Detailed instructions are available on the transfer department's page on KCS website at knoxschools.org. Are there any, that's the only announcement that I have. Are there any suggested changes to the agenda? Seeing no lights, can I have a motion to approve? Motion by Norman, second by Horn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Before we move on to reviewing our regular agenda, we have a special recognition tonight, a very special recognition tonight for our school board student representative Hannah Self, who I proudly say is a part of my district in District 6. The Board and the Superintendent. I'm going to back up here because I've got another one. The Board and the Superintendent want to take this opportunity to recognize a very deserving student this evening. Hannah Self was selected through a very rigorous application and interview process during spring of 2018 as our Board of Education Student Representative for the 2018-19 year. Throughout high school Hannah was involved in her school and through community. At Hardin Valley Academy Hannah was a member of the Technology Student Association as Chapter President, the Hardin Valley Marching Band as a flute section leader, was an HVA STEM Academy Ambassador, and was member of the National Honor Society Constitution Bowl and the Mu Alpha Thea. In the community Hannah interned at Oak Ridge National Labs, as well as with the Tennessee Department of Education, where she worked to learn about and contribute to community and STEM outreach programs in East Tennessee and across the state. She was also contracted by the Tennessee Department of Education to serve as the Tennessee TSA State Office Coach for the last two years. Locally, she's volunteered for the His Abilities Special Need Program at her church, at Dogwood Terrace Supportive Housing Apartments, CARM, and with the American Cancer Society through her high school. She's received several awards for her scholastic and community involvement, including AP Scholar, the Tennessee TSA Distinguished Service Award, HVA Niels Bohr STEM Award, the Women's Organization PEO Stars Scholarship, the Tennessee TSA Bob Hanson Scholarship, and was nominated for the HVA HAWK Award, which is the school's highest student honor. This May Hannah graduated from Hardin Valley Academy with state honors and distinction. She will be attending the University of Tennessee in fall as a part of the Chancellor's Honors Program. Hannah is planning to major in public policy and wants to minor in computer science. Ultimately, she wants to study educational policy with the desire to advocate for the expanded and strategic use of career and technical education for enrichment of the educational experience and career outlook for students. So Board, if you would give me a hand in congratulating Hannah. And Mr. Thomas, if you'll come forward with me to present her with her document, I would appreciate that. We could just all give Hannah one more hand, she's been such a delight to work with. All right, our next agenda item is our Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board, just a few brief updates since we last met. I'd like to congratulate Becky Ash, Principal of the LNN STEM Academy, who was recognized as the Tennessee STEM Innovation Summit last month. Mrs. Ash was honored with the STEM Innovator Award, which recognizes a Tennessean who has demonstrated an outstanding contribution to the support of STEM education and outreach within his or her region. This is a well-deserved honor and a great milestone for Mrs. Ash, who was the founding principal of the academy and is actually retiring next month. On a similar note, Tennessee Department of Education announced last month that Farragut High School has received the Tennessee STEM School Designation, one of only 11 schools across the state to receive the designation this year. Designation recognizes schools that promote and implement rigorous STEM-related learning opportunities for all students that lead to post-secondary achievement and high-quality careers. It was first awarded last year and only 26 schools across Tennessee have received it. LNN STEM Academy was part of last year's inaugural class of designees. You may have seen that Knox County Mayor Glenn Jacobs and I visited Sammy Hill Primary School last month to hand out library cards to students. It was an exciting morning in that the visit was just a small part of a much larger effort. This spring KCS teamed up with the mayor's office and Knox County Public Library System to distribute more than 6,800 library cards to students at 17 elementary and middle schools. This program is a wonderful opportunity to combat summer learning loss, and I'm very grateful to the mayor, the library system, and our employees for helping students read over the break. Madam Chair, members of the Board, this concludes my report for this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, are there any questions of Mr. Thomas? Okay, we will go on into the regular agenda. I am looking at five. C, items and contracts. Any comments, questions on number one? Two? Three? Four? Five? Six? Seven? Eight? Nine? Ten? Eleven? Twelve? Thirteen? Item fourteen? Fifteen? Sixteen? Seventeen? And eighteen? All right, moving on to number six, Board Policies. Letter A. Second reading. B, also a second reading. C. Second reading. Seeing none, moving on to number seven, Grants. Letter A. B. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair, we have several grants here, so I have two questions. One, on A through E, are there any changes from last year? Or anything new? And then specifically on the Carl D. Perkins CTE Grant. It looks like that's, I think I saw that's an increase, and so I'm just wondering what that 17% increase will add. And so if you want to address that, Mr. Wilson.
I'd be happy to, thank you for the opportunity. And you've got in your attachments just a small presentation, which is kind of a summary, to be honest with you, of just some key points on that. So there is a slight increase in the allocation from the state this coming year. Last year we ended with about $894,000 roughly was our allocation last year, and this year the projected preliminary is a million fifty is what we're looking at, a million fifty thousand. And so I would say already kind of looking, and if you look at the breakdown, the local plan, we've put most of that towards equipment, software, and those sorts of things. There are some new pieces in the budget this year that we haven't had in the past. Of course, you know my history is relatively short, couple of years. But in my history here, some pieces that we've kind of planned for that are new. We do have the other half of a position that was presented as part of the Title IV presentation, which is, we're calling it a college and career specialist. It was, I think, probably called more of like an EPO support position at that point. But that's a position that we're currently looking to use to, probably in, since we are talking federal and soft money, in the short term, build some systems and structures around how we are approaching career, awareness and exploration, and planning, and pathways, and all of that, really from K to 12. Right now, we know we've got some pockets of things happening, and some schools that are doing really great work in that. But the shift both in expectations from Carl Perkins in the federal guidelines, as well as the state standards for counselors have both sort of aligned, if you will, to make the focus on career awareness and really education around career opportunities a priority for both. And so this position is sort of going to bridge that work of ensuring that our counselors are educated on those different college and career pathways, strengthen their understanding of CTE programming, technical programming that are available after high school, and then again, what it looks like to work in these fields that we are talking to kids about through programs. So that's a new piece, another piece that I've built in there this year, again, from a funding standpoint that we haven't put money towards in the past. We have an opportunity that we're working through building out, and it's just a small group of students, but the Pellicippi State Campus at Magnolia has a new audio production and engineering program. They started last year there. And we're fortunate to have an AV productions program at Austin East and also at Fulton, which are pretty nearby. And so they're working with us to create a dual enrollment opportunity in the afternoons where students from both of those schools can come over, and so we've put some funding towards transportation for that. That's a new thing, and I think right now we're sitting at about six or seven students, I think, that are interested in that opportunity. So it's a nice extension of that CTE program that both schools already have, and hopefully can be a pattern for some things that we can do in the future. Those are, I think those are the newer type of items that are in there, and then you see some of our traditional things, externships and an expansion of numbers on that, but doing a little more of some of the things we've always done.
Okay, and then just one other thing, you've noted expanded use of funds below grade seven to support middle grades career exploration. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Absolutely, so that's part of what has changed, the law that guides the Perkins Funds was reauthorized in 2018, and will actually start implementation under those new guidelines for the upcoming fiscal year. And previously, we were not allowed to spend funds out of Perkins on grade levels below seven. They've now expanded that down through fifth grade, that we can do that with increased attention on the career exploration piece at the middle grades. And so we're looking at that, back to your question about additional resources, we're looking at some different software applications we can use that students will be able to participate in that'll give them, and then their counselors, and then eventually even their high schools, additional information to look at student interest, but then also match that with aptitudes as they're thinking about career and technical programs that they need to be offering, and they're thinking about opportunities post-grad that they need to be mapping students towards. They'll have a clearer sense of not only what do they think they would like to do, but how do we identify students who may be showing and demonstrating strength or ability in an area that maybe they haven't considered? Because we know that career choices are often based on exposure. So I know what my mom does, I know what a doctor does, like those are the kind of things that I know, but if I'm never exposed to like a career in STEM or something like that, then it's hard for me to know or to become interested in that. So we're looking at tools and things like that that we can put in place that become standardized and ensure that across the county, you know, we're saying a kid at every middle school is going to have a similar experience and exposure. We've got career fairs and things that happen, trying to knit those together so that we have a clear vision and strategically how we're exposing the most kids to those opportunities. How do we maximize their time when they're there, all of those sorts of things? And I've had some discussions with Carly's office and Kim Severance about the middle school career fair for next year, and we're working as a team on that one. So that, and funding to help for transportation costs on that, so there's some pieces in there to that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, you keep going.
Okay, I was just going to say, because I don't want to take too many liberties here, but if you'll notice, we did set one of our goals around, for this upcoming year, around industry certifications, and I know that was a topic of discussion when we were talking about the strategic plan. And so if you would bear with me, I'd love to brag a little bit about our performance for this year on that. So we ended the year after we did some review and went back and cleaned up some reporting and things last year with about 754, 753 industry certifications that students had earned. And then fast forward to this year where we are right now, kind of in our preliminary counting, we still have some students, actually even today, that were coming over and taking some tests at Lincoln Park. But we're right in the neighborhood of about 1,000 for this year, which is another additional about 250. And some that I'm most proud of, and we found these out this past week. So, and you're going to see me again probably next month or the month after, around those T-SIC exams. If you remember, we sign those memorandum of agreement each year for the Tennessee-specific industry certs, and those are in Dietetics and Nutrition and Human and Social Sciences. Well, we had about 100 students in the state this year that took the Dietetics and Nutrition Assessment. Only eight in the state passed, and five of those were from Knox County. We actually had four, we only had one in the state last year, and she was from Knox County. And we had four from the same classroom at Carter, Heather Wade's classroom, that passed, and we had the highest average overall in scores for the state in that industry cert. And then in the Human and Social Sciences, I don't think we had any pass last year. Out of 250 this year in the state, 67 passed, and we had 10 of those. So we're real proud of the work that our teachers and our students are doing. As you look at those 1,000 industry certs that our students earn this year, it was across 17 different disciplines, which I think again speaks to the broad application that we're looking at across the different areas, and it speaks to the excellence of the instructors who are learning and trying new things, because all of this, keep in mind, generally is on top of the curriculum and the standards that they have. It is aligned, but it does cause them to have to do some extra work and to try these things out. And so I think over time, as they grow in terms of their understanding and expectations for what these assessments look like, I think it's positive about the direction that it's heading, and wanted to make sure I highlighted that for you guys, too.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bab?
Yeah, I had some of the same questions, and you've answered those. But one thing I would like to say is, I personally would love to learn more about this, and I hope at our possibly retreat this year, we can really learn more about really specifically what's going on at our high schools, and kind of even like a five-year plan of, you know, I know this is not, it's an ever-growing, and we're trying to expand it, kind of where we see ourselves going, and I just would love more information about that.
Sure, and I would say to that, happy to do that, and you know, as we put some questions together, be happy to come and address them. A lot of what I would imagine that conversation would look like because of where we've been this year with the strategic plan, and thinking differently about CTE programming at the high school, how we connect that with middle schools. We have, we've asked principals to think about, you know, think about your community, think about the opportunities that are around you. We've had them meet with the chamber to discuss growth of the economic and workforce development in this region, and what is in their neighborhood, who should they be looking to connect with? And so in trying to build administrators' understanding of that side of CTE, because it is about career pathways, it is about opportunity in our region. In trying to do that, a lot of those conversations are just with principals to get them as much information as possible to really build their own five-year plan of, you know, these are the places we have to be committed, we have to double down, and know that, you know, this CTE program is important here, and we have to make sure that we have it. If we have a change in teacher, that doesn't mean that the program goes away. That means we've got to be committed to find someone who can come in and continue that program. And so that's a lot of conversations, it's a lot of planning. Certainly, we have, I would say from a district level, five-year plan, we have ideas about what we know some of our bigger opportunities regionally to be, and would like to see programming steer that way. But we also want to make sure, you know, that students have elective options and stuff. It's a nice balance you have to find in that, but yeah, I'd be happy to entertain whatever we needed to do for that. All right.
Well, my other question was just the other grants that we have on here. Are these comparable to last year, or is there, were there any surprises?
Thank you, Ms. Horn, but no, I think no surprises. There are a few grants listed here, voluntary pre-K, I think it says that in there as well. Same number of classes that we offered last time. I think kind of the one change in that, and to realize this, that's not the Title I and the special ed, it's just the ones that we have. Two of those we pay for out of general purpose, and 27 out of the, this mic seems really loud. Louder than usual, sorry. But the, so the 27 out of this grant, and the only change is, one will be moving from Lonsdale to Cedar Bluff Elementary, and that's to accommodate the first grade moving, excuse me, one will be moving out of Sammy Hill to Cedar Bluff because that accommodates the first grade class moving to Sam Hill this year in order to do that. So there'll still be plenty of room for students to be there, but it's just sometimes we shift classes where they're located. As far as other grants that are on here, there are some new grants that are listed when you said A through E. One of those being, make sure I'm on the right line, one of those being the discretionary grant from IDEA. Ms. Massey's here to speak to that if we need to. And there's also a robotics grant that is on there, and April Lamb, our STEM Coordinator for the district, is here as well to speak if you want to have questions about either of those. But those are new grants that aren't just annual ones that we get.
Okay, I did want to hear about the robotics, if she would like to tell us about that. Because it's just, I love that we're doing that, I think that's great, and that's definitely the direction we need to be in. So I wish it was more money. So I'm interested to see what kind of magic they're going to be able to make happen with this budget. And then my other question, too, there's a, that ties into that. There's a grant for South, let's see, South Knox Elementary for robotics, and whether they're doing the same thing with their grant, even though it's a different, it's coming from a different source. So that was a question about the robotics also.
Thank you all, I have to lower this down, pretty short. I'm April Lamb, I'm the STEM Coach for Knox County Schools. So the robotics grant, and I need to educate myself on the one at South Knox, honestly, I need to look over that, that we're bringing forward today is an opportunity to expand our VEX IQ and VEX VRC offerings to our schools throughout the district. Charlie is here with me, and he works with Tennessee Valley Robotics, and they fund robotics programs across all of the southeast United States and across the Tennessee Valley. And so one of the things we did when I moved into this position in August is we met and looked at robotics in our district. And one of the things that we noticed was, we had a lot of emphasis on robotics in our high schools, but we really didn't have pipelines from our elementary schools, middle schools, into high schools to introduce students to those skills early. And as Keith mentioned, those early exposures are super important to our students. And so he and I began looking at the different options. We talked to different robotics coaches in the district that had used VEX IQ and had used FIRST programs. And we were approached by the REC Foundation, who funds VEX IQ and VEX robotics competitions, and they had this district grant opportunity. So basically, that opportunity is if we can match what they give us, then we come together. So it's basically a 50/50. So we already had a good deal of VEX equipment within our district, and so we were able to use that as a portion of our match. And then Charlie with Tennessee Valley Robotics came in and supported us with a, or is willing to support us with a donation to help make up the rest of that match, so that we'll be at 100%. So that's where we are.
Great, that's wonderful, great, I'm so glad you're doing that, thank you.
Thank you. Do you all have any other questions?
No, Charlie, you're welcome to come forward if there's anything you'd like to add, we appreciate you being here.
I just wanted to compliment Knox County Schools, well, what they're doing, particularly in the state of Tennessee, I think the high school FRC FIRST program is probably the best program in the state. Hardin Valley has went to Worlds, they've got a world-class team, so I compliment Hardin Valley. But other high schools here, Farragut, Austin East, they're just fantastic programs, but it goes to what April was talking about. You need to get these programs in the first grade level so that kids will get interested and then will be ready for robotics when they get to LNN, or Hardin Valley, or Farragut, or the other schools that offer the high school program. So we're happy to support the expansion of these programs. There'll also be an expansion of the competitions so that the schools won't have to travel to compete. So we're looking for a really big growth of programs here in Knox County next school year.
Great, great. Anyone else? Thank you, thank you. Dr. Wilson, I really do applaud your work as I'm out in the community trying to plug Byington's Hallway and my district. Your name is always out there as someone that people have talked to and familiar with. So thank you, thank you, you've done a remarkable job in expanding that, and that's much appreciated. I do have one question on, anytime I see the word discretionary. Ms. Drennan?
Yes, ma'am.
How will that be used?
So it's going to be used for job and independent living training for students with significant disabilities during that transition year when they, many of them will be 21, 22, because they generally stay until they're through their 22nd birthday. We've become much more limited with the new regulations around work, students getting job opportunities through sheltered workshops. It's really looking at competitive employment, and that's a nationwide trend. And Project Search has been utilized in several of the school districts in Tennessee with really high success rates for getting students with significant disabilities placed in jobs post-secondary, which is of course a requirement of the IDEA for us to be looking at, how do we make that transition to post-secondary? So this is going to be a good opportunity. We're going to hire somebody that will be a person that will be trained. a good opportunity. We're going to hire somebody that will be a person that will be trained in the Project Search. It's a Tennessee Department of Ed-run program. There's a lot of training that will be involved. They'll be implementing the program. And then part of the money will be used to hire some part-time job coaches that will work with kids in their job settings, and in some situations, maybe some, as they explore independent living, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Long-term, when, when we no longer have that discretionary grant, we have money in contracted services that we utilize, and we have a few programs that we anticipate will be phasing out. And when we no longer have discretionary monies, we will transition that, if it's successful, obviously. But we anticipate it will be based on the success rate for other districts. We'll transition that into that budget code.
Wonderful. So there's a plan for ongoing services?
There is a plan for ongoing, yes. Thank you.
Right. All right, I'm looking at, still under grants. Any more questions about C? Looking at D? E? F? G? H? I? J? And K? Moving on to number eight, contracts, letter A? Or B? Number nine, regular agenda items, looking at letter A? B? Ms. Bab?
I guess I have a question about this concerning the budget. How did we get, how did this get left as far as purchasing textbooks, and how does this adoption play into that?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes, I think what we're, and John, Ron, you jump in and correct me here, too. But again, I guess the budget gets adopted by a county commission, hopefully tomorrow. And I think the follow-up after the adoption of the budget is going to be, for us, we're taking a look at our fund balance. And also in conversation with the county. See, I don't know that there'll be any additional help there, but we're hopeful that maybe the county would help. But, so we still plan on the textbook purchases, but just trying to get the regular budget adoption process behind us first. And we know it'll be a rush, Shannon's sitting there, too, shaking her head, to get textbooks. But we were in this situation, I think, last year, too. So I think, I think we'll, Shannon will deliver. So we'll be back to the board with this as soon as we get the budget process finalized.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Listed in, in the description is, under the courses and recommendations included in this addendum, there are two that are textbook-free courses, Contemporary Issues and Ancient History. The Contemporary Issues, if there's not a textbook, is there a curriculum? Can somebody explain what that is?
Thank you. Yes, these are the courses that are the elective courses for social studies that did not have a list provided by the state for us to select from. So the teachers have gotten together and looked at what is available to them, and that's how they made these selections. Contemporary Issues is designed to be a course where students are able to evaluate current issues that are, that are coming up. So a textbook, by the time it goes through publication, is no longer a current or contemporary issue. So the teachers have put together a curriculum that allows them that flexibility with some guidelines following our policies around sensitive material.
Okay, so that would be a new course that's not being offered currently?
We actually do have that course that's offered currently. It's just there was nothing on the state adoption list that our teachers could select for that course.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, seeing no other lights. I'm looking at letter C, differential pay plan.
I've got one.
Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to, it's not really directly related to this plan, but I did want to ask Ron about the, sort of the long view at total, the subject of differentiated pay for the whole staff. Where's the, when's that going to be taken up, or what's your, have you got any meetings or discussion of that yet?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Norman. Yes, we have, we're, we've kind of collected both the budget department, HR, payroll, IT, and we've got kind of right now, I would say, an informal committee that we're, we're going to be looking at things like this, plus the salary schedule on, on reviewing that, and taking a look at best practices, and kind of reviewing how we got to this point as well. So it's, I suspect it's going to be fairly comprehensive. We already have had discussions along that line, and so we're trying to get a, kind of a game plan together on that.
Okay, does it look like you might be able to get something together for the, for the coming year?
That's the goal.
Fiscal year?
That's, that's the plan.
Okay. So like a year, like take a year, formulate it?
Correct.
Test it, all right.
That's, that's the goal. That's the objective we're pushing hard for.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm assuming that this, this is all included in the budget already. It looks like, is the, on the very last section, under experience, it looks like this is an addition to, for the step increase to, step to year 21? Is that, is that a new addition? Because currently, aren't we only going to 20?
I'm going to defer this to Mr. Bolton.
Thank you.
Since that was part of our, our talks when we were talking about budget, and we never could really
Right.
settle on that, that's not going to necessarily be in place this year. So that is a little difference from what we had. That's what we had on the plan last year. So we just rolled it over to this year, because it's going to be a continuing discussion, but it's not anything that's, that we've taken action on.
Okay, so basically, we would need to approve that if we were going to take action on that.
And we certainly can strike it. Basically, what we did with this document was, we took the document that we had from last year, because we approved this on a, on a yearly basis. And the state requires us to upload it before July the 1st. And so we made the changes to the additions in this year, and we just kept what, what we had done in the previous year.
Okay, and I see that it does, it is labeled as 1819. So the, I feel like my mic is really loud, too. Sorry, I don't mean to be yelling at you. 1920, the 1920 portion, are there any changes here, or is this basically what we already have in place?
There are some changes. If you look on the, the front page, particularly right there, where it says hard-to-staff subject placements, back in February, the board took up and approved the, the expansion of those categories that would get a $5,000 signing bonus to include speech-language therapist, school psychologist, hearing specialist, vision specialist, and audiologist. And then on the, the very next page, where we're looking at special educators, they were removed from that $5,000, but they were given that $7,000 stop and paid out over three years. And so those are the two differences that you'll see from the last year's plan that was approved.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bab?
I guess it's kind of going along with this. So the things like the Izone principals, master teachers, lead teachers, that's all already in place. We're just approving it again for this year continuation?
Correct.
And then this might just be terminology that I wasn't familiar with. But I'm familiar with the steps, but then there's the one about the five lanes. Has that always been in place also?
That has. When it's talking about lanes, it's talking about degrees.
Okay.
So you've got bachelors, masters, masters plus 30, EDS, and the doctoral step. So that's what makes up the five lanes.
So as a teacher gets maybe more credentials or education, they can move up a lane?
Correct.
Is that how, okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions. I'm looking at letter D? And E? Moving along to item 10, Ms. Horn?
Let me bring you have a question on E.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Bab. Back to E, I apologize.
Yeah, can I just, I mean, I, I wasn't really aware that we were doing this. Can somebody just explain this a little bit? I mean, I know we're trying to get to 4%. I mean, I understand the goal, but I guess I wasn't aware that we were planning on doing the transfer, since during the budget process, we talked so much about the 3.5%. So if, if there could just be a little bit more explanation to it.
Thank you, Ms. Bab, yes. So what we, what we did, and Mr. Thomas, when we approved the budget, it was very clear that we would continue to work within the budget to try to identify any potential savings that could possibly be there. Subsequent to the board's budget approval, Mayor Jacobs, in his budget address, made the commitment to actually fund the Lonsdale construction project. In our budget proposal, we had programmed in, in the debt side of, of our portion of general purpose, we had programmed in that the school system would incur the debt for all three of the new facilities. The subsequent to that, the mayor agreed to fund Lonsdale project. That would provide roughly 800, what we estimate about $800,000 of savings annually to the school system that otherwise would have been programmed into the debt payment. Also, as we looked down the road, the school system, we will pay off five different bond instruments over the next three years. That will provide funding eventually of about $3 million or more annually. So you put those two together, that's about $4 million of savings that will be directly, that would directly impact our budget. The thing is, though, is that those savings would not largely hit until about two years down the road. We approached the county, and so our staff, we began to talk with the county, is there a way that the county could restructure our bond payments? It won't affect the amortization of the specific bonds themselves, but the county charges back our portion of the debt that we actually refund to the county. And so we approached the county, is it, would it be possible to accelerate those savings into next year, and let us kind of ease into the savings, rather than have to wait two years before we realize the full impact? And, and they agreed to that. So it wouldn't, it would not negatively impact our budget, nor would it negatively impact theirs. So it's really a timing issue, but they were very amenable to allowing us to do that. And so those, that plus the Lonsdale project is allowing us to do this. And so what, what we'll do is, once again, this is, this is a transfer from the other uses category into the personnel accounts across the board. So the money essentially is, well, I'm going to say the budget capacity is already there. So this would just be a switch between one, one category to another. Long explanation, but there was a lot of weeks of working with the county that went into this, so.
No, I'm glad I asked about this, because I totally did not understand that at all. And I guess when you're talking about that $4 million savings eventually that will really hit in a few years ago, so we're not at the 1.8 million that we'll start incurring for the ongoing staff raises, we still will have some savings left, like 2.2 million, if I can do my math right. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. And the encouraging thing about that is that this would, providing this particular transfer into next year's budgets, we would have, because of the payoff of the bonds, we will have funds that would sustain this action in future years as well. So it's not just a one-time event, but it's, it's, it kind of allowing us to kind of smooth into the savings, which will allow us. So we kind of accelerated it up, which would allow us to do this. But sustainability is there as well.
Okay, and this is maybe, I guess going into a budget question a little bit more. So as we are going into our capital plan, and with these three new schools on the horizon, even if the county takes on Lonsdale, with the funding of these two extra schools, we still should have this savings hitting our books?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to check. Thank you.
Well, Mr. McPherson, we are glad to have you back.
It's way over my head.
All right, seeing no other lights. We're going to move on to public forum. Ms. Horn?
Madam Chair, we have no speakers tonight. Thank you.
All right, and to board forum, starting with Ms. Satterfield?
No. I just want to let the board know that the Project Grad Summer Institute is underway at UT. 125 students from AE and Fulton will participate in a week-long residential pre-college enrichment experience. And if you would like to visit, the first session goes through June 7th, and the second session will be June 9th through 14th at UT.
Thank you. Mr. Norman?
Congratulations to the Bearden Boys soccer team, who won the state championship in a rather dramatic way with a penalty shootout at the end. I can't imagine how exciting that was. That's, that's, that's big. Anyway, just congratulations to them.
All right, Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I always hesitate to throw out congratulations, because there's so many wonderful things going on. But the Farragut High School baseball team won first place in the state, so congratulations to them, and also to them, to the school on their new STEM certification. So, congratulations.
And I have to throw in some of West State Championships, too. We, at the track and field state championship, we had Shay DeGraff. He came in second place, but he tied with his jump at 15 feet on the pole vault, which is amazing. And then our 4x800 relay got first place at state, and it's Hannah Burkhart, Caroline Lewis, Janie Holochek, and Emma DeWalt. And I just, huge congratulations to them.
Mr. McMillan, Ms. Christie, and I have none. Any other comments, questions? All right. We are about to adjourn, but before, board members, before you leave, if all of you will please stop and speak to Ms. Cote. I'd greatly appreciate that. Do I see a motion to adjourn?
So may.
Second, we are adjourned. Thank you.